Recording. Did y'all hear that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about law and gospel. Those of you who have been Lutherans for a long time might know that this phrase, "law and gospel," is something that is a filter through which Lutherans see almost everything. Carol, have you heard of law and gospel before? Is that something that you've... I don't think so. Okay. Well, this is gonna be just a little 101 on law and gospel tonight. So how in the world are we gonna talk about that First Timothy text about women in leadership, women's silence in church? And we're gonna spend actually just a tiny bit of time tonight talking about that particular scripture because we're gonna talk more about how we understand what law and gospel is and why some of us think it's pretty important. So along with Martin Luther in the 16th century, this principle, this doctrine, like I said, is how Lutherans understand everything. So the law, and we can think of that as the Ten Commandments, because most Christians, that's what they think of, show us what God requires of us. And it also shows us that we are mostly unable to do it. And that would lead us to despair, as it often caused Martin Luther to be totally in despair, as well as to punish himself because he felt like what God desires and requires was something he could just never do. He could never be this perfect human being. Every day, he saw, every minute, he saw that he was doing something that he shouldn't be doing. Now Luther exaggerated a lot on that too, which his mentor was constantly pointing out. You know, I mean, his mentor, you know, finally, von Stalpitz, finally said, "Martin, if you come to me confessing that you have burped or farted one more time, I am just going to whack you upside the head." It was just ridiculous, but that showed how distressed he was about that whole thing. Hey, Becca. One of the things that... Well, and then the law would cause us to be totally in despair if it were not for the gift of Christ, His life, death, and resurrection that saves us despite our disobedience. One of the things that, here again, a lot of Lutherans and others are familiar with is Luther's small catechism, right? Has everybody heard of that? And of course, that was just a very basic document. Luther was very concerned as a pastor when he went around and made home visits, like a lot of us do. And he discovered that all of these people who were, you know, coming to Mass and had been baptized, really, they didn't know anything about Christianity. They didn't know the creed. They didn't know the Ten Commandments. They really didn't know the Lord's Prayer very well, or at least couldn't tell you anything about what it meant. And so Luther started writing some explanations to these different things. They were originally just little slips of paper that were printed and sold for a penny. And, but over time, were by like 1529, were collected together. Now, catechisms have been around for a really long time, well before Luther. Right, Carol? My Roman Catholic friend. So they've been around for a long time, and they covered a lot of the same things, right? Here's how we understand the Ten Commandments. Here's how we understand the creed. What Luther did, though, that was significant, when he, when they actually published what was called then the Small Catechism, and we still do, he reordered it. He intentionally put the Ten Commandments, the law, first. Did these explanations to each of the Ten Commandments, which I'm gonna illustrate in a little bit. So what he wanted to do was to say, "Here is what God requires and desires of us." And what he wanted to show you, right off the bat, in that catechism, was that you were not capable of keeping these laws. Now, that would drive you to despair, as it did him. So then the next part of the catechism is the Apostles' Creed. He put that next because he said, "The Apostles' Creed contains what God promises." Promises the, in the grace and salvation that comes through Jesus Christ, promises us the gift of the Holy Spirit that continues to abide with us and comfort and challenge us. So then Luther helps you move from despair to grace. And so that was very much his intent. And some people might say, "Well, why do we even need the law? If we've got grace, if God enables us to achieve, you know, forgiveness, why do we need it?" Well, both Luther and absolutely needed to know what God requires of us because if you took all that away, then we would not recognize our failings. And if we didn't think that we needed God and God's grace, we would never embrace it, right? So without the law, we would just be convinced that our own way of living and seeing the world was just fine, right? What's the problem? Now, there is a recent study that shows that how this can happen. I heard a researcher, a social scientist, describing this multi-year, multi-staged research project that they did on Generation Z, which I talked about my sermon on Sunday some. So that Generation Z is, are those people in our community who are between the ages of six years old and 24. And this study followed what would now be some of the oldest of those kids for 11 years. And about every four years, they would re-interview them and ask them some of the same questions and would see how their minds had changed or grown, or what have you. So, and they interviewed these kids, these young adults, about a variety of things, not just religious things, but religion and spirituality was one of the things that they covered. And so I'm listening to this. I was at a continuing ed event, and I was listening to this social scientist talk about this. It was done mostly in San Antonio. And she said that a lot of the, a lot of the folks were all over the spectrum. Some were very involved in faith communities. Some were not involved in anything at all. Others were very much, you know, kind of in the middle. But when they ask about, you know, "Well, what does religion do?" Or, you know, "Why do you have it in your life or not have it in your life?" And the people who said they didn't really have it in their life, even though they believed in God and they said they believed in heaven, the reason that they didn't participate in any kind of religious or faith community is not because they thought it was boring, although that might have been part of it. But what they said was, "Really, you know, all religion asks you to do, or God asks you to do, is just be good. And I think I'm pretty good." So I raised my hand at this point, and I said, "Who defines what good is? You know, what do they mean by 'good'?" And, and she said, "Oh, they define it for themselves." And she said, "When we asked them, 'What is being good look like?'" They, most of these Generation Z people were very clear on that. And they said, "Basically, if you don't rape or kill anybody, you're good." That's a pretty low bar. You know? Doesn't involve any, you know, anything else of helping your neighbor or honesty, or whatever it might be. So that, that was kind of where they were, and they couldn't imagine that they would do either of those horrible things. So they must be good, right? Well, Luther would have been all over that, and I'm gonna show you how in just a second. One theologian, very helpfully, I think, talked about law and gospel in this way. Remember Luther kind of described it as, "The law tells us what God desires or requires, and the gospel tells us what God promises." Well, another theologian has put it this way. "God's Word always reveals our brokenness." That's the law. And God's Word also heals our brokenness. That's the gospel. So when we approach this scripture in First Timothy or any scripture, we ask the question, "How does this verse or story reveal my brokenness, and how does it offer me healing and hope?" What I wanna do is talk just a little bit about law in the Bible. And just as a reminder, okay, several... First, a disclaimer. One, I am not an expert in scripture or law, right? Maybe some of you are, but I'm not, right? I am, I am a country preacher who maybe reads and studies more than the average bear, but you know, that's kind of where I'm coming from. We also have to remember that when we say "law," and I think this is where a lot of us get tripped up, we think of it as that Old Testament stuff, right? And that's not what we mean by "law." It can mean, of course, the Ten Commandments and all of the 613 other commandments and ordinances in the Old Testament, but it also means the teachings of Jesus, right? Jesus had a lot of, "This is what you need to do," right? And so that can be law as well. But both in scripture and in our lives, I think there are really two kinds of law or commands. In scripture, there are really three kinds of law, and we'll get to that in a second. But I think of these two kinds of law as one are, and this is, by the way, this is my terminology right now. I'll tell you when I switch to the scholars. But I call one forever laws and the other for now laws. Yeah, like I said, biblical scholars use much more technical terms than that. Start with these. Think of it this way. When you were little and/or when you had children in your home, I suspect that you had these two kinds of law in your home. One forever law might be, "Don't steal from others." You just, we just don't do that. So when we were young, our parents used something like that to teach us what God requires of us and what civil law requires of us too. So this is a forever law because it's for everyone all of the time. It's not something that you grow out of, and it doesn't have any time limits on it. We probably also had other kind of laws in our house, things like, "All homework has to be done before you can go outside and play." Or, "Beds have to be made every morning in order to get your weekly allowance." So those are for now rules of the house. And when you're 25 and you moved out, those laws don't apply to you anymore. And actually, if you're 25 and you still live at home, they probably don't apply either, right? You've grown out of those. But parents were serious about them at the time, and there would be consequences for not obeying these house rules. So when you were eight years old, if you stole money out of your mother's purse, like my sister did, I never did anything like that, but she did, just saying. So if you stole money out of your mother's purse, or if you ran outside before your math homework was done, you would be punished for each of these because both of these rules for living were in place to shape you both as a child of God and as a child of the world. But one was a forever law, and the other was a for now law. So did you all have those kinds of rules when you were growing up or when you had kids yourself? Remember what any of them were that you can say in public?
Well, we, we kind of worked on a star system. I had kids with learning disabilities, so we had rewards built up. And if they didn't get, and the teachers were on it, they were on a plan. So homework-wise, they had to get all this stuff done in order to be able to watch Friday night ABC television, which was a big lineup that both of my kids were very much into. And it was very easy for Rusty to make that, but very difficult for Sandy. And we'd get a big thing, "Yay, she gets to watch the rain today," you know? And sometimes she'll just say, "TV's off," you know? So it, you know, but we, you know, we worked on systems like that. And of course, we had, you know, you had to do certain chores and all that kind of stuff. But I don't remember what they are anymore because that was for way back then.
I know, I know. Somebody else was gonna say something, I thought. Anybody else?
What about "because I said so"?
Oh, because that's... Yeah. Well, there's some of the "because I said so" is in the Bible as well. That's how some of that, I know, that's how some of that law goes too. Well, in the Bible, there are different kinds of law as well. There are called forever laws and for now laws, exactly. But I mean, if you Googled it, if you Googled "law in the Bible," what would probably pop up is it would say, "There are three kinds of law in the Bible. There's civil, there's ceremonial, and there are moral ones." And like I said, for a lot of Christians, the law of God equals the Ten Commandments because that's our favorite part. But in the Old Testament, there are 613 commandments. So while we as Christians might try to center our, "Here's what God requires of us," on the Ten Commandments, our Jewish brothers and sisters, depending on their denomination, observe many others that distinguish them as Jewish people, like not eating shellfish or not working on the Sabbath or festivals or not cutting their sideburns, but curling them down the sides of their heads. So commandments tell us what God desires of us. And I know when I was a little kid in church, I would have told you that I was a pretty good keeper of the Ten Commandments. I could not imagine that I had broken any of these. Like I said, unlike Kathy, my sister, who... Kind of poor Kathy, and kind of had a little running list. And I only say that kidding because what I slowly discovered is that just because I was not a stealer of money from my mother's purse or a killer, studying Luther's Small Catechism, I don't know that I really caught on to this so much when I was in confirmation class, but I, but I did later. I realized that those commandments weren't a checklist for me to just run it down and say, "Nope, haven't done that. Nope, haven't done that." Doesn't work that way. Using Luther's teachings, for example, you know, a commandment that I would have thought, "Of course I haven't broken this," was, would be the commandment, "You shall not kill." I mean, that's why those young people in Generation Z are like, "I'm good. I haven't killed anybody, you know? I haven't done any of that bad stuff, you know, that I see on TV." But what Luther did was he, in his explanations, as you may remember, in his explanations to each of those commands, you know, they're phrased kind of negatively, "You shall not do this." And so Luther would flip it and say, "Well, what are we supposed to do instead? So if I'm, if I'm not supposed to kill anybody, you know, is that all I have to do? Like not stab anybody?" Luther said, "No, what you're being called to do is to help your neighbor in all their physical needs." That was the way that he talked about it. You're to help your neighbor in all their physical needs. And so, you know, I realized over time that I break that, maybe I, well, I personally break it, but we as whole communities, we as a global community, break that all the time because there are people who die every day. There are people who are dying right now as we're having this Bible study because they are dying of hunger. And they're dying of hunger not because God hasn't made enough food in the world, because there's plenty of food in the world, there are plenty of resources. The problem is that globally, we don't share it. So we hoard it, you know, some of it. I mean, when you think about the fact that how much it, how much money all of us use to live in a day, and I mean, things like, you know, our insurance, our gas for our car, our food, our mortgage payment, all of those kinds of things. And such a great percentage of the world lives literally on a dollar or two a day. You know, the number of people that sleep on grass mats, you know, all over the world. And being poor is one thing, dying of starvation is another. And so those commandments about, "Don't steal anything," you know, "Don't kill your neighbor," you start to realize, wow, at least, at least globally, we break that all the time. Have you ever heard that before, had that concept of what those commandments are about?
You know, you could talk about, you know, the literal interpretation of "I do not kill," which you're talking about Generation Z, that it's all generations about taking someone else's life. But you know, you kill someone when you bully them. You know, you kill their spirit, and people don't look at it from the perspective because you're still breathing, so I didn't kill you. But oh my God, have you, the damage that you've done to me over the years from being called, you know, disheartening, whatever word you want to use, that's killing someone as well. So you've gotta get away from all the literal words that are there and look at it from a full context of, yeah, when you don't share your food, someone dies of starvation when you don't, you know? When you don't share a blanket, someone dies of cold. I mean, it all falls into all of that. And if you get stuck in the literalness of it all, you miss the whole meaning of it.
Right. And that's, that was definitely Luther's point, Carol. Is that there's so much more to this than we, than we want to see.
I'm interested in a, in a small little thing. You've got a bookshelf behind you. Is the catechism on it?
Is the what? Oh, yes.
It should be. I'm just wondering how little the little catechism is.
Oh, let me see, where did I? It might be, oh, it's stuck still in my, in my confirmation stuff, which is over on the side.
Here's one right here.
Oh, it's pretty skinny.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Yeah. Now, there is...
Barely a monograph.
It's a third, it's a third of the size of the Catholic catechism.
Right. Well, because Luther's point was, you know, I said, he was so upset that he realized that kids didn't know anything, adults didn't know anything. And his intent with that Small Catechism was for parents to use it at home to teach their children. And so it's written almost on a kindergarten level. So, and to be used to ask a question and have, like, your child answer it. So, and when Luther was writing this, he and Katie Luther had their son Hans, who was three years old. And so, like a typical toddler, Hans was running around the house saying, "What's that? What's that? What's that? Oh, that's a chair, oh, that's a stool, that's the bread I'm making," or, you know, whatever. Or the German "Vas ist das." And so Luther used that little phrase. And so it would be like, "The first commandment is this." And then it was, "You shall have no other gods." And then the next, the next part of it is, "What does that mean?" Right? "Das ist das." And then he would give a short explanation that was short enough to memorize. And so then kids or adults who didn't know would be asked to memorize that. So that was the very simple, like, at-home version. And Luther really believed in faith formation at home. And, but he also, he also wrote the Large Catechism, which was intended for priests and teachers to use. And a lot of those things came from sermons that he preached on the catechism. Because in Luther's day, every priest was required, I think, three times a year to preach on the catechism. And so he had to prepare sermons on, you know, the first article of the creed and the Sixth Commandment and things like that. So a lot of that came together as a large catechism. And then Luther said that the commandments show us that keeping, keeping God's commandments, you know, just are not possible for us because of our sin and our self-centeredness. Even if obedience were the way that we were saved, which he didn't believe, but even if total obedience to the law was how we were to be, how we could be saved, we still couldn't do it. You still would struggle. But through the cross of Christ, through this gift of God's grace, we are made right with God, just as we are. That doesn't mean that we say, "Oh, goody, I don't have to do anything," right? I mean, what happens is, when you realize that you're saved by grace, it kind of drives you back to the law. Okay, let me relook now. What is it that God desires for me? And how can we all work on this together? Not in order to be saved, but because we are, right? It's like, then it becomes not a duty, but a joy. You know, how we say that in our Eucharistic prayer, it is both our duty and our joy that we come together around the spread and wine and around this story. So we're called by the gospel to to be neighbor-centered rather than self-centered. And that's what we're called to do. So the law shows us what's right, shows us what God desires, shows us how we should be, how we should strive. And I think obey, you know, trying to obey the law shapes us more fully into the people that we're really meant to be. So one of the, one of the things now to look at is, so if we put on our law and gospel glasses, how do we understand this First Timothy passage about women in leadership? In the, remember that Third Generation Church? Last week, we said the plain, you know, it's kind of studying the the plain sense of the text, trying to figure out what was going on in the Third Century Church that might lead them to recommend something that seems to be against what both Jesus and Paul in many places had to say about the partnership between men and women? What would make them switch like that? And one of the conclusions that is possible, that we talked about last week, is that, you know, we're all in a particular context. We're all in a place, we're all in a government. We're all in a way of being as people of faith. We don't live in a bubble. And the context that that Third Generation found themselves in was very heavily Greek culture mostly, but then also the Jewish culture, which had come along too, and that both of those cultures had the modest housewife as the ideal. And that women's silence was considered a virtue. And that it might be, and this is that might be kind of thing, you know, looking at it through only one lens, it might be that what that early church was being advised to do was to not call so much attention to itself by people that were trying to shut it down and persecute it. Remember part of what the writer of First and Second Remember part of what the writer of First and Second Timothy and Titus was trying to say and, and counsel this young pastor Timothy on was how will our faith have children, right? How are, how are we going to continue on? There's, there's so much oppression everywhere. The church was already calling great attention to itself for being so, so different from any other, um, religious community around them and being very different from the culture. A culture in which women did not have any kind of dominant, much less equal roles of, of any kind. And so even, we mentioned last week that even the fact that men and women in Christian churches worshipped together was totally different from the way that they worshiped in the Greek culture or the Jewish culture where men and women were separated, right? Um, so the sense of, you know, everybody's equal in baptism, there's neither Jew nor Greek, slave nor free, male nor female, just wasn't flying in the culture. And they had already been through a lot of persecution at this point and saw more to come. Could be, we said, that one of the reasons that this council was given was to say, can we just keep our heads down a little bit so that we don't get totally mowed over? Um, that that could be, you know, that that could be one of the reasons about this whole sort of accommodating the culture, perhaps in order to survive. That could be one of the things that was going on. Now, when we talk about those different kind of laws, I could go back to my kindergartening talk about forever laws and for now laws. For all we know, the intent could have been, let's just do this for now. This isn't a forever thing. You know, let's get through, let's get through this hard time, let's get through this time of persecution. Let's get, um, you know, our church planted more. Uh, here again, we're, we're third generation, um, and you know, Jesus has not returned, they are having to say, you know, uh, they're having to become more institutional is what they're having to become. They're starting to go from being this Jesus movement um, to saying, all right, how do we do long haul strategy now? And it could be that part of this, um, these sort of male dominance that they were suggesting was one, was part of a long haul strategy. Now, was that wise or was it unwise? Was it faithful or was it unfaithful? Um, that is certainly, I'm sure people can debate that in different ways, but I mean, the way that I see it is, we've had, um, when the, when the church kind of turned its back on the equality of gender, um, we lost a lot and it was really hard to come back from that. Um, if indeed that's what was going on, but I do think it's, it's one of the, um, one of the cases of what was happening there. But any, any of your thoughts on, on that particular piece?
Uh, just to throw in a little bit of context, I guess, I went and looked in some of my extra biblical information about Roman culture about that time. And this supposedly was written in about the sixties by someone, and, uh, I was looking, there's some of the same kind of thing in Colossians where Paul is giving you the household code. Husbands be like this, wives be like this, slaves be like this. Only in, in Colossians, it was done with a more loving touch than in, uh, Timothy, where it's like, I demand. This was also during the time of Nero, who was scapegoating Christians for the fire of Rome. The great fire that they had had. And he wasn't necessarily hunting Christians, but when he found them, and unless, unless they revoked Christianity and worshiped Roman gods, they were horribly executed at the time. So there was a lot of that kind of intimidation going on. I can fully see that they would want to, the Christians would want to be, uh, be themselves, but keep a low profile.
Because if we, if we all die, if we all become martyrs, then the cause is lost. Or is it? I mean, it's God's work in the world, right?
R, you would think God has a plan.
Right.
You know, another remnant to be saved. But, uh, yeah, there was a lot of that kind of.
But see, that's where, I think that's where our.
You'll be found kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, thinking back to, uh, the ways in which that are just sketched all through the Bible about how God makes these wonderful promises to us and, and it's like, at first we applaud and then we go, can we really trust that? I think we, you know, I don't know that's gonna, I think about like Abraham and Sarah, you know, where Abraham is promised, you know, here he is, an old guy that has no children, and you know, God takes him outside and says, see all these stars in the sky? You're gonna have that many descendants. And he goes, okay. And like Sarah and I have been trying for fifty years, you know, to have a child. And so, you know, he decides to, you know, he and Sarah decide to take matters into their own hands and, and, uh, he has a child with Hagar instead, and God's like, nope, that's not what I was talking about. You know, but we often try to, to say, yeah, God, you're so Pollyanna, you know, that, that sounds really good, but I think we better, you know, uh, we better take some of this into our own hands. Really hard for us to trust a lot of times. But we're scared, we get scared by stuff, right? Like somebody coming to burn your house down.
We, we can only see the short picture, we don't get the big view, so we don't know how it fits in a lot of times.
Right.
And just as a disclaimer, I see I'm really outnumbered disclaimer, I don't, I don't like this section at all. It makes me feel creepy.
I know.
It's, it's not a good section, but I do, I do understand the context of maybe why it was written that way, but I see it more as, I look at it more as, there, here's a negative, uh, in order to help us find the positive.
Yeah. And if, and if that, and, and then, um, you know, sometimes we can, um, especially with these kinds of texts sometimes, um, you know, when women started raising a lot of these issues in the sixties and seventies and doing their own, um, scholarly, um, biblical work, a lot of the accusation at that time was with people who disagreed was that we were just being totally influenced, here again, by the culture, that we were being influenced by the culture because you know, women's lib and all this stuff was happening and that we were just trying to see, um, scripture through a lens that actually was not there. And, um, you know, so folks like me, and maybe it's like some of you who would argue with somebody that this passage in First Timothy does not reflect the overall message of the Bible, or certainly of the Gospels. You know, with folks who disagree with that, their first accusation is going to be that you're being totally influenced by the culture. That it, or as we say now, it's politically correct. Which is, uh, you know, I mean, that whole phrase I can't stand because it, it's such a way of, of putting other people down and saying, you know, it's not real, you shouldn't really truly be concerned about these things. So I think that's why it's important to say, no, it's, it's, um, you know, if it is because of, of our culture, it's because our culture has kind of opened some of our own eyes to what, you know, to what the gospel proclaims. So for me, it's like First Timothy so contradicts what we consider to be um, the core truths of the Gospels. And, um, and that we can't put up with. You know, if somebody tells me that, um, you know, if they said something like, um, you know, I believe that all black people are of the devil and must die. I am not gonna look at them and say, well, that's your opinion, you know, if you, if you, that's the way you need to think about it, and that's, no. It's not. It's just not right. Some stuff isn't just, you know, everybody just doesn't get their own opinion about some stuff. Um, at least that's, at least that's the way I feel about it as a, as a preacher of the gospel on a, in a local theologian. But, so that's why I think looking through all these lenses is important. Yeah, Kathy?
Well, I think too, that when we look at this particular letter, Timothy was a young, fresh out of seminary. This may have been not only a for now, but even a very small for now that says until you get a handle on how the church functions. Cause we know at least in our culture that the women take over. Not necessarily in the teachings, but definitely in all the other categories. But the women are the, a big part of our congregation now. That, that maybe that was a way of just saying, this is the way you get it started. It doesn't ruffle any feathers, it, it hangs in with the culture that you're in. But it may that be that he knew Timothy well enough to know that women just scared him.
It could be, and that if they looked like, um, an, a, a religious organization that was, um, you know, either women were equal to men or somehow in greater leadership than some men, that could have been a cause for not taking them seriously. Um, or maybe even, you know, the greatest fear of all, losing members. That seems to be a motivator, a thing that drives us like crazy. What if people leave because of this? Oh, well, we better not do it, you know, no matter what it is, or we're just freaked out all the time. So next week, what we'll do is we will look at the principle called, um, scripture interprets scripture. Um, which just like I was talking about, you know, when you do a word study in the Bible and you're like, what in the world does that Hebrew word mean in this context? I don't know what's a firmament. Um, you have to go find the other places where firmament is used and you can understand what they're talking about. And then say, oh, okay, is that what they thought that was? Um, or is that how they described it? And so we'll do the same thing, um, in terms of when you don't understand something, where can you go? Where do you go measure it against? You don't go anywhere else except some other part of scripture. I mean, this is our, um, you know, these are our holy writings and other things can sometimes, outside sources can help us understand it a little bit, but ultimately scripture interprets itself. And, um, and makes itself plain or keeps itself hidden. So, and then sometimes with passages, you just have to say, I do not know what that means yet. I just, you know, I don't, I don't really get it, we don't understand it, and, um, new things can sometimes come to light and, um, you know, it's okay to have mystery. That's what we're all about. That's, that's the heart of, that's really the heart of who we are, um, being a part of the mystery of God and I no longer feel like I have to explain everything to everybody's satisfaction. You know, I'm okay saying, I don't know that, or I don't understand that, or that piece is really mysterious to me too. Um, that's certainly the way I felt when I was, you know, sitting among those parents who just lost their twenty-two-year-old son this weekend, you know? You know, there's no, there's no, well, I think this is why this happened. Um, but, you know, that's the way it is. Well, our time is up. Any other last comments or questions or anything that you wish I was doing that I'm not?
I just wanna say I'm sorry I was late, I was in a council meeting and.
Yeah, yeah, we know, we all know how that goes.
No, I was coming home from work, so.
I know, you made it, that's great. Well, this is, um, this is being recorded, so we will be able to, um, to, uh, get back to it and review it again. Like I said, we do have people that are watching it, um, from afar um, at their, at their own time and their own pace, so I'm glad about that. So.
Doing it, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad. All right, I'll see you all next week, same time, uh, seven Eastern. Thanks, bye everybody, blessings.